All right, all right, all right. Welcome, everybody, to the April 12th, 2023 City V. Dyna Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the rest of the planning commission, although our attendance is low tonight, we are grateful you're here, both in person and to anyone tuning in remotely. Say it every time, but your curiosity and participation and feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change together here in Edina, specifically regarding how people want to use their land. So the city is committed to receiving your input in a variety of ways. We've been collecting public input through our voicemail as well as our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org, and it's important that everyone knows that your comments have been received and reviewed prior to tonight's meeting. You do not need to submit feedback in another way, but you're more than welcome to. Tonight, we have one public hearing, and we have one sketch plan that follows a public hearing. For those who would like to provide testimony remotely for the public hearing, you can get ready right now. Please call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 6876070 POUND. And when you'd like to get in queue to speak, push *1. And please state your full name and address before speaking. You get three minutes to speak, and we'll let you know when the time runs up. Provide some further instructions as we open our public hearing later. But with that, let's get going. First item of business is to call the meeting to order. And next, we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. Great. We have a quorum, so that's important. For people who don't know, we need at least five of us here for this meeting to happen. So glad to not sideline the applicants tonight and residents who came to show up. So the next item is to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Move to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. We will also approve the prior meeting's minutes. Or not yet. Never mind. I don't see it on there, so.
They will be included in the next meeting packet for approval.
Next meeting packet. Okay. Sounds good. No rush. All right, well, this opens up our next period, which is the community comment. So this is your opportunity as a resident to speak about an item that's not on tonight's agenda, like a public hearing. Just come up to the... Come up and say your full name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. And, yep, if there's anything else, we can refer any future matter to a further meeting if it warrants it. But is anyone here for community comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. So this is our public hearing portion of the meeting. And like most meetings, it's a similar agenda for a public hearing. We will have the... We'll have staff provide a presentation based off of the staff report and findings therein. The planning commission will sit for questions. Then it will... Then we'll provide an opportunity for the applicant or developer to provide a presentation. We'll have questions again, and then we'll open it to a public hearing, which is your opportunity to come and speak. You'll have three minutes. When the light turns green, you have... Your three minutes starts. When it turns amber, you have 30 seconds left. When it's read, your time's up, and we'll let you know. And then it will come back to the planning commission after the public hearings close to deliberate and provide a recommendation for approval or denial. And with that, this is our public hearing for 6500 Berry Road, a monument sign setback variance, and Planner Bodicker will present.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. The applicant tonight is requesting a sign variance for the setback of a freestanding sign on the north side of the property at 6500 Berry Road. The site is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Berry Road and 65th Street West. Site plan for a new medical office building on the subject property was approved in 2021 and is currently under construction. The approved site plan included variances for the building for the north and west side setbacks. The approved building setback on the north side of the building is 18 feet, and that is measured to the curb. The subject property has two street frontages and is allowed to have two freestanding signs, one that is adjacent to 65th Street and one that's adjacent to Berry Road. The applicant is asking for a setback variance from the required 20 feet to a proposed 14 feet 6 inches, again, measured to the curb, for the freestanding sign that is adjacent to 65th Street West. All other signage that's shown is code compliant. On the site plan here, you can see the four highlighted areas that... Those are the locations of the building signage and the proposed monument signage. The monument sign requesting the specific variance tonight is the sign on the north side of the building. The site is largely surrounded by medical office building or medical office uses, with the exception of the colony, which is a three-story condo building located directly to the north of the subject property. The site is zoned POD 1, Planned Office District, and is guided as Regional Medical. Signs that are in the POD district for buildings that are four stories or less are allowed one wall sign per building frontage and one freestanding sign per frontage. Between those two signs, between the one freestanding sign and the wall sign per frontage, they're allowed 86 square feet total between the two signs, and neither sign can be greater than 50 square feet. The monument sign adjacent to 65th Street, like I said, is 14 feet 6 inches from the property line, or that's the proposed distance. The required distance for monument signs is 20 feet, and that is measured to the curb. The question tonight is, is the proposed variance justified? And staff believes that yes, it is, and that the criteria for a variance has been met. The setback for the building on the north side of the property is 18 feet to the curb, and the required setback for a monument sign is 20 feet to the curb. A monument sign cannot be placed 20 feet to the curb due to the location of the building, and a sign could not be placed on the west side of the building due to the location of transformers and electrical conduits that are underground. The monument sign will allow for the additional tenants in the building to have some visibility due to the limited building signage that's allowed, and the practical difficulty is caused by the small lot and the size of the lot with the narrow width, which also limits the placement of the building. The small lot size and the width is not common in this area or within the zoning district, and these circumstances were not created by the applicant in front of you tonight. Staff believes that the proposed variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and that the proposed sign will have a limited impact on the surrounding neighborhood and not affect the visibility at the intersection. With that, staff's recommendation is to approve the requested variance to allow the monument sign on the north side of the building to be placed 14 feet 6 inches from the curb based on the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. The project did receive a few comments on Better Together, and most of those were comments on visibility and whether or not the sign is illuminated. Staff did ask the traffic safety coordinator to weigh in, and I included an email from him in your commission packet tonight. And he noted, he did a site visit and noted that the visibility and stopping distance with the proposed sign is adequate with that intersection and had no concerns on the placement of the monument sign. And I will point out that one of the conditions of approval is that the sign must meet the city's requirements for illuminated signage. And so there are requirements... This is an illuminated sign, but there are requirements that they have to abide by, and they're not asking for a variance from those requirements. And with that, I can answer any questions, and the applicant is on the call.
Commissioner Strauss.
Thank you. Planner Bodicker, where does the sidewalk... How is that... So, yeah, that's... So...
So the proposed sign is adjacent to the sidewalk. Here is the sidewalk on the site plan on the north side of the building.
Okay.
And the red highlighted and yellow is the proposed location.
Okay, okay. So the red is just a dimension you're calling out?
Yes.
That's going over there?
Yep. This is the dimension.
Okay, okay. That's not part of the base or anything?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Quincy.
Hi. If you don't mind, just go into slide number four, please. Yeah. So from what I could tell in the packet, the monument sign is about 36 square feet. So I'm trying to figure out, how did you come up with the dimensions? Was it the eight-feet height by 4.5 width that we see, or was it the six feet from the base and the six feet across? Like, which two measurements made up the 36?
It's the smallest rectangle around all the signage, so the base and the side of the sign would not be located. So it's the smallest dimension here that encompasses all of the sign or the letters and the... Any... What sort am I looking for?
Logos.
Logos. Thank you. Sorry. Any logos would be included in the signage calculation, but the monument or the base or any additional area of the sign is not included in that. So it's just the copy area, essentially.
So is it the six feet by six feet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So we do have the applicant on the line, and I just want to remind them, if they would like to speak at all, please hit *1 right now. Operator, can you please unmute the line? Okay, you can go ahead.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, this is Rodney Hens with MSP. I've been listening in, so I just want to thank the commission here for the consideration. I wanted to make sure if there is any questions on behalf of the body group. I was here to answer any questions. So I just want to say thanks for the consideration.
With that, any questions? Yeah. Commissioner Smith.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for joining the call here. Just wanted to understand a bit more about the relationship between Bati Edina Properties and I'm guessing it's Bati Gastroenterology. Is Bati Edina Properties the owner of the entire building, and then you just lease out, you know, to Southdale, future tenant, and the Bati GI business? Are they just residents of the property?
That is correct. So the Body LLC is the owner of the site and the building, and then Body Gastro is the tenant, both owned by same person, but two different separate entities.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you for answering that question. We will now move to the public hearing portion. So we will open that up. And again, a reminder, well, we'll do it first in person. So anyone who is here that would like to testify, please come up. You have three minutes to speak, as noted. Just state your full name and address. And maybe for the listener, if you could mute your line. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lydia Smith. I live at 6483 Berry Road. Looking at that, I don't know which way it's direct, you know, how it's sitting on the property. I mean, is it going... Okay, on 65th Street, is it going this way or is it going this way? You can't tell from the diagrams that they, you know, that are in the printout and on there. I can't really tell which way the sign is supposed to be facing. So is it... So that when you're coming down 65th Street, you can see it this way, and when you're coming down Berry Road, however, this way? I... I... You know, you can't tell.
Unfortunately, this isn't much inter...
And I know that, you know, with all the electrical and stuff on that one side of the building, I guess that would be the question of how exactly is that going to affect the sign? And I know there was... The city guy, I was... Happened to be out there when he was looking at it, and he had mentioned something to them about the tree, the trees on the next property, that in the summer, it would probably block some of the sign. But, you know...
Unfortunately, this isn't interactive, but we'll answer those questions after you have a chance to testify. So if there's any other questions, just keep...
No, that's basically it. I mean, otherwise, the building seems like it's coming along well, because I see it about two times a day, because I look close. So I just walk over and see how it's coming along, and they got pretty much the underground parking and the first-floor parking, all that stuff almost complete, and then they said they would be starting steelwork or something tomorrow or Friday. So, see, I keep a butt on it, but that's kind of, you know... I just want it to, you know, it to be nice for the neighborhood and so that it... And I know you said something about the illumination that can only be so high because of the fact that there is the apartment building across the street from it. But thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here in person that would like to testify? Seeing none. Let's move to who has potentially called in. Is there anyone in the queue?
We do not have anyone else in the queue to speak tonight.
Maybe I'll just give a quick rundown. Usually, we give it about a minute, right? But...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that if you would like.
Okay, I'll just repeat this again. So if you're watching and listening, please call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 6876070 POUND. You might have the details on your screen, not sure. And when you'd like to speak, press *1. And we'll just give it a minute for anyone listening that might feel like calling.
Yep, I'll give you one minute here.
Thank you. All right. With that, I would welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right. Thank you for coming and testifying and staying engaged in the process. We appreciate your insight. And for those who submitted comments, same thing. Now it's the planning commission's turn to kind of deliberate if we have any more questions for staff or the applicant. Now would be the time. Yeah, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, just a quick question. I know with this particular property, there's a colony to the north and then plant office districts on the east, south, and west sides. What is the communication requirement? If you're building something at this location, what is the notice or communication requirement that would need to happen?
The variance notification? Is 300 feet. And the colony, I believe, is all condo owners, so each individual owner would receive notice.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just have a question, following up on the residence, which way the sign... That was a good point. Hadn't even thought about that. So I just wondered if you could explain.
Yeah, just to clarify, so the sign is oriented north-south, so it's perpendicular to 65th Street. So when you're driving on 65th Street, you'll be able to read the sign.
Anyone feeling like supporting this? Welcome a motion.
Motion to approve the requested sign variance to allow the monument sign adjacent to 65th Street West to 14 feet 6 inches from the curb.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Good luck with your sign. That's, I think, the sign we were waiting for tonight, right? Anyways, that concludes our public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. And thinking back to how well we know the process compared to other residents, now we're moving into our reports and recommendations, and this is really the time in which the community has the best opportunity to influence and make an impact on the decision, the sketch plan process, and neighborhood meetings and other things that surround it. Just some context, the public hearing that starts with a formal application, then we have a 60-day window to make a decision. The city started about a decade ago, the sketch plan review process, to try to get something more informal earlier before that clock starts ticking. So this is our opportunity to provide non-binding feedback to the applicant as well as the city council, where they will see this in their next meeting or whenever it's scheduled next. And with that, we'll turn it over to Director Teague to give a presentation, and similar to the public hearing, then the applicant will give a presentation, and we'll have some collaborative dialogue. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you. Chair, members of the commission, this site is located in the Southdale area. It's the old Macy's furniture. Well, old, they're still there. Located on the east side of France, it's guided in our comprehensive plan for Community Activity Center. It's this dark pink area. Here's the site. The Community Activity Center is where we've anticipated highest-density development, where we allow the taller buildings to go. The site is currently zoned PCD 3, Planned Commercial District. Here's a look at the existing furniture store. Note that it's located adjacent to the promenade. So the applicant would remove the existing building and surface parking lot and divide the property up into four blocks, consistent with the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, providing pedestrian connections to the promenade. So here's a look at the site plan. What's proposed here is 250,000-square-foot office buildings on France, 10 and 11 stories. Note the pedestrian plaza that would connect to the promenade. So this would be no vehicular access from France. They would utilize the existing vehicle entrances to the north and south of the site. There's shared easements between those two properties. There would be a north-south private street connection with public easements over it to provide those connections, north and south. There's a pretty decent sidewalk that exists along the south here that would remain. New sidewalk would go in along the north lot line, again, in addition to that pedestrian plaza through the site. Vehicular access to the apartments would be off this north drive as well as this location here for the south building, and entrance to the office would be off the private street here and here. Here's a look at the massing of the project. Note the buildings taller on France, and the applicant will go through this in a little more detail and go through the streetscape. So this request would require a re-zoning to POD, so we would create a zoning district specific for the site. They would be asking for flexibility from the standard PCD zoning for setbacks, height, floor area ratio, and the... Oh, so 10% of those units... I should go back. I didn't talk about the housing. So there would be two seven-story housing structures. Each would have 230 units within them, and they would provide 10% of the units for affordable housing, consistent with our policy. So that POD zoning ensures that the units are within the project also. Because of the density here with this project, an environmental assessment worksheet, basically, it considers the impact this project has on the environment from traffic, wildlife, those types of things. So at the expense of the developers, we've hired WSB to perform that. So that would be considered as part of the... Any formal application that would come in. So this just quickly shows where they're asking for relief on setbacks to the north and south lot lines, to the promenade, setback to R1 properties, and also building height. The zoning, the zoning height overlay here is eight stories and 96 feet. As mentioned, we have an 11-story and 150-foot building. Also, the floor area ratio is 2.4, and current code is .5. They would have enough parking to satisfy our new parking ordinance, actually a little So a couple of items that staff is concerned about, and that's that building height of the two buildings along France. So I want to go to this slide here. So this is taken from the Design Experience Guidelines. This is typology number two, and so this, what we're seeing here is France Avenue. They are providing the 50-foot setback from the Design Experience Guidelines. At 60 feet, we suggest that the building steps in 10 feet. They're actually proposing a 20-foot step-in, but there is an 84-foot cap for those buildings along the street, and this building is 150 feet tall. So because of that extra height, we need to maintain a setback from residential properties. So this graphic indicates the nearest R1 property is right here. Based on the height of the building, they need a 900-foot setback, and this would be 720 feet. So they would need flexibility through the POD there. Reducing the height of the building to meet the design guidelines takes care of both those issues. So I want to point that issue out. That's worth discussion for the planning commission. Maybe I will stop there, answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant will go into the project in a little more detail.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, thank you, Director Teague. It's a plan... Yes, that one. Okay. Just... So along the east, right along the promenade, let's go with the southeast building corner. So they're showing one... Yeah, where the cursor is, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6. Are there like stoops, or what is that? What am I looking at?
Yeah, I believe those are walkouts. Some of the units would be able to walk out on... To the promenade. One thing to mention, too, the Design Experience Guidelines talk about a 15-foot setback to the promenade. This is a little over 20 feet.
So envision something like a townhome or... So envision something like a townhome or condo kind of?
These would be apartments.
Apartments. But that would represent a unique entrance to that one unit?
It would, yep. And I'm sure the architects will get into?
Okay. And maybe when the gentleman come up, we can talk about this more. Thank you.
Is that similar to the bower at the promenade, how the bower comes out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they have entrances to the promenade as well, yep.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Padilla.
Yeah, thank you, Director Teague. My questions are about the traffic. So looking at France Avenue, and this is, you know, I don't think the responsibility of the developer, but this is the responsibility of the city, is it not? If there are, we're increasing the turn lanes at the north and south entrance to this. Where and how does the monitoring and the changes to the traffic flow, how does that get determined and impacted, especially considering the fact that we've got another potential development across the street?
Yeah, so all that will be factored into the traffic study and that EAW that's going on, the Environmental Assessment Worksheet, to determine how this, how this will impact all those roads. Do, will they need additional turn lanes, things like that? So we don't have answers to those at this point, but the traffic study would.
And is there any possibility that in this traffic study, or that we'd end up with like skyways or pedestrian bridges?
I don't know that a sky, well, they are proposing a skyway connection between the two office buildings. But how that would impact the traffic, I'm not sure.
I'm concerned about over France, you know, and not as so much the cars as pedestrians and bicycles and things like that. If you've got, particularly since this is a link to the, you know, the Park District Plan, and we've talked, you know, in terms of the other property with pedestrian access and bicycle access and things like that, I think we've got a variety, we've got a number of different issues here in terms of traffic that I just want to make sure they're?
Bicycle traffic is another one that we want to take a look at, how that can tie in. But in terms of a bridge over France, that's probably on the city where the developer, that's something that the city would need to take into consideration.
Right, which is why I'm asking you that question.
It's been talked about over the years. Yeah.
So, okay, so it's TBD?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Olson?
Thanks, Director Teague. My question is about the southernmost sidewalk. So is that, will that be the city's property? And is there a chance to improve? I guess the first question is, is that going to be the city's responsibility, that sidewalk, or is that developers? And I'm thinking of things like better signage, lighting.
Yes.
Kind of a better access, kind of to Commissioner Padilla's point. The intersection and how it links to that trail and working with Three Rivers Park District on better signing. And I just wondered if there are, is a chance to put any kind of pedestrian level lighting along that? Is that the city's or is that the developer?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be part of the purview for this project. They would be, the internal sidewalks would be maintained and by the developer. There would be public easements placed over them. But the maintenance, ongoing maintenance would be the responsibility of the developer, of the property owner.
So that kind of tan right below, right above that red dotted line would be the developers?
Yeah. And that's, that's an existing sidewalk now. We could make some improvements to it, certainly.
Yeah, especially the lighting, I think. And then same goes with the sidewalk facing France. And I meant to ask this for the other project last week. Do the Southdale Design Guidelines require pedestrian scale lighting now along France Avenue as developments come in?
Yeah, we do typically have, we've got a palette of lighting that we do require, so we can have that included with a formal application.
Any other questions? Thank you, Carrie. Now we'll give the opportunity for the applicant development team to come up and give a presentation, and I'll ask you some questions and give some comments.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Patrick. I'm with Enclave. Excited to be here with you this evening to go through our sketch plan proposal for this project. Most importantly, excited, as said at the start of the meeting, to be a part of a public process, really from the start, and get input from the community. We've gone through a couple neighborhood meetings, met with city staff. It's been a great process so far, and looking forward to some feedback before we put together a formal submittal. Nate is with ESG. He's leading the design and architectural process. Nate is going to lead the presentation. We're going to go back and forth a couple times, but I'm going to turn it over to Nate to kick it off.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening. Nate Anger with ESG Partner, Chair Bennett, commissioners. It's good to see you again. Happy to be here talking about another exciting project. I'm just going to kind of do a brief overview here, because I think everybody's pretty versed in this site, especially because we were talking about this about two weeks ago on the other side of the street. But, if I may?
Oh, please.
Do you mind if we go back to the start? I didn't realize the back and forth. I just wanted to do a quick introduction. I apologize for the miscue. It's my fault. I wanted to give a little bit of background on Enclave, if you don't mind, real quick, before we get into this. And again, excuse me, Nate. So a little bit of background on Enclave, just before we jump into the presentation. We're a development company based out of, we have a location in North Dakota, one in the Twin Cities. Myself and my colleague Riley Smith here, based out of the Twin Cities. Our project team in the Twin Cities would be working on this project. Enclave has projects throughout the Upper Midwest, a lot of projects in the Twin Cities. Next slide, please. Enclave, what's different about Enclave, or at least that we like to just offer, is that we're an integrated development company. We're involved with the project not only just from the start and the development process here with you tonight. We're property manager, we're contractor, we're long-term property owner and investor. We only bring that up in the, in the sense that we have a long-term vested interest in the success of the project, doing something that's quality and staying consistent with what we're talking about through the whole project. Versus if you're a merchant-type developer and you construct a project and you leave, not to say that that model doesn't work, but we find that this results in great outcomes in the long term. Next slide, please. Enclave's role in this particular project, we're going to be the lead applicant developer. We have the property under contract with Macy's. We've put together a project team as I started to introduce, architect and designer is ESG. We also have StandTech onboard with Civil Engineering and Braun InterTech for testing. This project, like any project, we look at it before we jump into it from two really large buckets. First bucket is what is the market telling us? So we do research, market analysis internally. We look at comps. We hire a third-party market study firm. We meet with different brokerage companies, talk to the real estate community. We've done all that homework on this site, so we generally have a grasp around what the market is kind of telling us about the site. That's helped inform us for this project. But just as important, we've done research on the comp plan. The Greater Southdale District Guidelines have been very helpful. It's been really the starting place for our design, and we hope that you see that reflected in what we're proposing tonight. And again, we've also met with the city staff, did a neighborhood meeting, so when we propose this project, that's the context in which we put together our vision. Nate's going to go into the vision in much more detail than I will, but just a really high level. We want this project ultimately, at the end of the day, to be something that's, you know, obviously we want it to be great for whoever the office tenant is. We want it to be great for whoever lives in the apartment buildings. But just as important, we want it to be something the community's proud of, the entire community, and is an asset for anybody in the community to come visit and take part of. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nate to kind of get into the details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that's a good introduction, I think, to the goals and objectives for this particular site. This is a relatively unique site, because it has quite a bit of history, and it also kind of comprises a unique part of the 2040 comp plan, being kind of that confluence of density, mixed use, and activity. And so those are all goals that are aligned with what we're trying to do here. What you'll see as we kind of dig deeper into our presentation is that the mixing of the uses is very important, and we're doing that by providing essentially four different buildings with two primary uses, office and residential. And all those are knitted together by kind of a shared pedestrian experience. Just really briefly, Director Teague, I think, did a good job of indicating the street typologies in his presentation. This slide just shows us what are the relevant street typologies out of the Greater Southdale Design Experience Guidelines. So we are dealing with the France street room typology, as well as east-west streets, and then the central promenade, which has its own requirements. As Director Teague indicated, we've done our best to comport with as many of those guidelines as we can. We can certainly talk about height and some of the more specific setbacks as you have relevant questions. I think probably you all are familiar with this, but it bears mentioning that a lot of these sort of ideas, again, comport with what we're trying to achieve here. The idea of human-scale and walkable environments are going to be very, very important for this development. I thought the question about the bridge is very apt, because these pedestrians have to come from somewhere. So it'll be curious to understand kind of in the future how all that happens. But we've endeavored within our own development to create a highly amenitized, highly walkable area that is very vibrant and active. Architecturally varied is another, architecturally varied and mixed use are two more key factors in the design that we will be bringing forward. Because we do have two different types of uses here, allowing the buildings to scale against each other and the neighborhood is going to be very important. We'll talk about that in the massings. Director Teague kind of gave a precursor to that, but I'll dig into that a little bit more as we get there. So just really quickly, by the numbers, we're looking at potentially up to 300,000 square feet of office, so 150K and 150K across the two buildings, and then two 230-unit multifamily buildings, both with the 10% affordable units within those structures. At the bottoms of at least the office buildings right now, we're also contemplating retail restaurants, some sort of active use down there. I'll kind of skip through this. So back to this slide that you've seen, and probably will be a reference for later conversations this evening. Our team has really endeavored to take the Design Guidelines to heart on this project, taking knowledge that we've learned from the 70th and France project, just two blocks up the street, and really continuing that language, using a strong north-south connection to bifurcate the site, and also to provide kind of the main artery for traffic flow through there, so that we can keep an east-west traverse free of cars. That's really kind of a driving force here. Also, because that is going to be what intersects with the promenade, so allowing that to move east through the site is very, very important to the project. By doing that, we set up a street grid, essentially of four buildings, that will all front internally onto that pedestrian plaza, so that we intend kind of the interior-facing piece of this to be more human scaled. That's where we see the activity, while allowing the exterior face of these buildings perhaps to speak more to France Avenue on the west side of the building, and then the promenade on the east side of the building. And that may mean architecturally, as we get deeper into this process, that the architectural treatments of that are different than the architectural treatments on the interior, just because of the scales and what we're addressing. So here are some massing diagrams. They are rather small, but I think they help to understand some of the site forces that are acting on these buildings. So when we look at this, after kind of breaking this up into the four-block pattern, we're really trying to understand what the buildings need to do to provide the experience that we're trying to achieve. So most important here is to provide a welcoming, safe pedestrian experience internally to the development. And we do that by trying to move as much massing off of that interior as we can. Obviously, the sun moves from east to west, so putting tall massing against interior inherently would create kind of a valley internally there and create that area that we want pedestrians on in shadow. So we've tried to move some of that massing away from that internal street, to provide more to access to daylight. That's kind of why you see more of the massing pushed along France. That's why we see a little bit more height there. It also feels appropriate that if you are going to have height along France, is where we see that happening, certainly further north in the 70th and France development. And as Director Teague kind of indicated, in the 2040 plan, this area is potentially where we see the most dense development. And then along the promenade, excuse me, we're making really active moves to pull away from that. And so the building, you can see terraces back. We're using the guidelines to develop some of that, but also doing, making additional moves there that are to the benefit of both individuals experienced in the promenade, as well as individuals within the housing property itself. So some of that is light shed to allow people to not have shade on pool decks and the like that are happening on that amenity terrace. But it's well not to create a street wall against the promenade. So we really are actively trying to get away from creating a hard wall against that green boundary. And then you can see the two buildings are really shaped to identify their typology. So the office is a more rectilinear building, and that's purely driven by typology. Offices kind of want to have a different column spacing to be as efficient as they can be, whereas residential buildings, because of a double-loaded corridor, want to be a little bit thinner and rap. And so that's why we see the residential buildings being thinner, almost letter shapes versus the more blocky office. It's worth noting at this point, though, it is pretty early days still, and we haven't even done fit plans. So these massings could change, but the things that will stay in place are those site forces that we're talking about. So the things that shape the exterior of the skin are pretty static for us right now. We'll probably come back to this, I imagine, as we have more conversation, but these diagrams just demonstrate how we are meeting or attempting to meet each street room typology that's interacting with each relevant edge of the building, specifically section number two, that interior street, which we feel very strongly there is kind of an ideal dimension for how far apart those buildings are for occupants to feel comfortable. This is actually something we learned through working through the City of Adenos Planning staff in the development of the 70th and France kind of connection. So we've carried forward some of those lessons, both with the street and the sidewalk and the plantings. So we're feeling very comfortable with that right now. A couple more sections. And then, this is just kind of a context image board to talk about, because we don't have design at this point. We did want to present you with, as Patrick kind of indicated, the level of quality and sophistication that we see each of these projects adhering to. We see residential and office in this particular area being of very high quality. That's really what this area needs. That's what the residents will desire. And so on the right, you can see a number of admittedly ESG-designed projects, although I'm sure there's other equally as good architects out there that design multifamily. But we would expect these to be kind of of the highest level of architectural detailing, probably a little bit more modern in style, but still with kind of some more classic sensibility. The office, and we can maybe talk about this a little bit more, but it is a little bit less defined. As you're probably familiar with, the office market is very transient right now. And so I think it's up to Patrick and Enclave right now to determine the direction that office might take, whether it will be speculative, meaning that we would build it without a tenant in place, in which case the design might be different than if we design and build it for a single user. And so it's a little bit harder to pin down what the exact architectural style of that will be, but we can talk about it qualitatively, that, again, we're going to have a very high level of finish, lots of glass. We do have the Design Guidelines that really guide those percentages of materiality, but specific articulation might be left up to the specific typology. And then finally, the pedestrian realm. We see this as a very highly amenitized, highly engaging pedestrian landscape. So that means public art, that means outdoor dining, that means engagement with a streetfront. We expect this to be something that draws people in, as opposed to just being a transit through. So we would call this a to-space, not a through-space. And it's going to be very important to talk about those gateway moments. How do you enter the site? And then how do you exit the site? We have two very prominent pieces of that. We have the intersection on the west with France Avenue, which needs to be opening and welcoming and bring people through. And then we have the exit or entry along the promenade, which is also drawing people through. So that's going to be really important as we move forward with the design. We have talked about other projects, you know, using public art to be markers for those sort of things. So I would imagine that sort of approach would continue. So I would imagine that sort of approach would continue. With that in mind, Patrick, you have other things you want to wrap up? We're happy to stand for any questions or conversation.
Turn it over to fellow commissioners. Questions? Comments? Anything?
It's okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you very much for this. I love it in theory. I live right there, and I walk the promenade with my dog like every day. So some of my questions really are sort of about the livability of it. So the pedestrian plaza, where I'm struggling a little bit, and it's not necessarily with the design, I think it's where the intersection is. People from the west will be crossing to the south of the project. There's a street, a smallish sidewalk, and there's quite a distance to get to the pedestrian plaza. So I love it in theory, but was there any conversation about making the pedestrian plaza closer to the intersection? So that would be one question. I'm totally fine with the height and the setback. I have no issues with that. I think it's far enough away that the 720 is adequate. Totally fine. And then as far as the activity along the pedestrian plaza, is the idea that sort of the restaurants or shops or whatever would sort of be a T-face at France, or would it all be within the plaza area? And will there be on-street surface parking along the pedestrian plaza? And that's all.
Great, Commissioner Olson. Excellent questions, as always. I will answer those in reverse order, and Patrick, if you have amendments, please jump in. About the restaurants, I think a lot of that is TBD, but in the best version of this plan, I think that T is probably very appropriate, just because it projects that activity out onto France and then draws you in. And if we talk about that gateway into the site, I think that begins to leverage into your first question, which is how do you move people through the site? So yes, and. The second piece of that is, what we have set up here is a very classical sort of four-block pattern, and that's really what the design guidelines are calling for. But there is a world or a version of this that perhaps that pedestrian plaza bifurcates kind of an angle leading up from Gallagher over, because I agree, and I think that's a little bit of Commissioner Padilla, maybe where your comment was coming from about pedestrian traffic. The only modality for that right now is at the signalized intersection at Gallagher. So we, as a team, understand that challenge. I think that's something we're going to continue to investigate, and certainly we would welcome support of staff and anybody else who's interested in looking at that. Another big piece of that that is in play is the composition of the office buildings. So we've made a compromise, I guess I would say, in this plan to have that east-west promenade occurring and actually bifurcating the office, and that's why you see the advent of the Skyway there. Were that sort of plaza to either bifurcate horizontally or diagonally or jog in some way, there is a potential that a building could be more formal in one piece that would sit north of that. And so those are kind of the moving parts that we're working with. I really appreciate the comment. I think it's really important to understand not only how this site functions, but how it connects to the other site. So we'll continue to look at that. I don't know, Patrick, if you have additional comments or...
Great comments. I agree with Nate's responses. The only, I guess, thought that I have, and it doesn't solve the problem or the question posed, but I would offer that we do have a north-to-south pedestrian way along the west side of the site that we intentionally tried to make look-feel like the plaza area, so it's, you know, all one connection, and it's wider than what's minimum required. So doesn't probably address it 100%, but understood, and I think we'll explore that further depending on the direction we get. Thank you.
And then just the surface parking lot. Will there be surface parking along the pedestrian plaza?
Commissioner Olson, thank you. I missed that piece. So surface parking, specifically where were you looking?
Well, just trying to envision, is the surface, so the pedestrian plaza will be no parking, it won't be a whiner roof or whatever that word is.
Whiner.
Whiner.
Yes.
But will people be able to pull in and park along that middle, center road?
The north-south connector?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Olson. Parallel parking along that north-south connector is going to be critical to traffic calming. So psychologically, when you park cars and you begin to kind of constrain that, it forces other people to slow down just because you're worried about knocking into somebody's door. So we do anticipate a variety of that. Of course, all of that sort of parking will be in conjunction with staff guidelines and making sure that we are being safe and appropriate, but yes, that's being contemplated.
And I just think my final, final comment, for real final comment, is I think there's a real opportunity, and this is probably more the city, that intersection, something needs to really happen if we're really getting connected, because where I live, just walking across 68th, which isn't nearly, I mean, I almost get hit every single day, and there's a flashing lights, and it's just going to the gallery from Southdale in this intersection. I think that would probably fall on the city. It's probably not even any capital improvement plans or anything, but something to make that intersection, especially because that critical link to the Three Rivers Park, so...
Going down the line, Commissioner Strauss.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just because parking was just mentioned, I guess they're assured a little bit, but primary parking is going to be probably accomplished underground. I mean, I'm only seeing a little bit on that north-south, but I like that explanation for just of common. That's a good concept, but, and that's one of the things that drew me to the, this particular graphic, was it, I mean, it does look so firmly. Okay, and maybe I'll back up. This has captured, this project, the design guidelines, as well as anything that's been presented to us. And when I knew that came on, the commission, that Southdale group was just finishing, and we just literally covered the whole chamber here with schemes, and it was all just daydreams, I mean, ideas, and this really, it's a key, it's a key block, and I can't believe anybody's going to miss the homes, but I won't talk about them. But it really does seem to hit a home run to me for capturing the intention of the guidelines. I mean, this is, this is what I thought they were talking about, and Mick Johnson, Mick has addressed that, and it was a pretty, I think, a pretty supportive comments that he made. And in his review, he said something about, the plans were, you know, not so advanced that it was still obvious that you were seeking feedback and ideas and ways to go, and that, to me, I thought that was a, yeah, this seems to be just a, just a good start, and so good. I mean, I think we're on the right track. And then the connection to the Fred in the Nine Mile Bike Trail, the commitment to green, solar. A lot of your slides, you also showed public art, and to me, that's the other real feature amenity of, is that the promenade is the, how many ways you can experience that and how this becomes part of that, and I think that's going to be wonderful. And then your explanation of your massing, why and how, I think that's, that's an important point, and it made sense to me. I was wondering why bike here and not. So that's resonated with me. And then the other one, my personal experience is that I am, particularly now, spring, summer, fall, I make that crossing from Gallagher across France to connect to the promenade and that. And that's always the one challenging part of the experience of going out with bikes is, you know, watch out for cars and expect the worst. But that, that design and how that gets accomplished is going to be critical, how people can access from one side, you know, to the other. I guess that's it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Strauss, thank you. Regarding your question about parking, we aren't showing any parking because obviously in the future, nobody is driving cars. So there are two, two levels of parking underground here. So unlike across the street at 7200, where we had so much elevation to deal with, where I remember, I recall being in this chamber maybe a year ago, and we're talking about the superplate, right, and putting a plate over the top of everything and allowing that to be the amenity and the parking underneath that. We've been able to achieve that here, and I really appreciate your comments about this being kind of the best version of the design guidelines. We strive to do that, and part of that was the ability to basically set one consistent item across the site and then make very, very efficient parking underneath. And as Director Teague mentioned, we are overparked as a result, so we can actually dial back, which is a nice position to be in. It also means that we have more flexibility in terms of uses, because we can support the higher density uses like restaurants that need to be parked at nine per thousand or office that need to be parked at five per thousand.
If I may, I'll just add one more comment to that. I agree with what Nate had just mentioned. Depending on the user and the office buildings, you know, medical users, for example, require more parking. Depending on discussions with the city and how we interact with the public space, do we need any level of public parking? All these things, we don't have figured out, but we wanted to show a plan that has more parking than underparked, and then allow the flexibility later to work through where we land on the vision.
I would just add that while there is underground parking, there is five levels of parking that's above ground with liner buildings. But there is parking above ground.
Yeah, there is a good graphic. Thank you, Director Teague. And maybe I'll just comment on that in case anybody missed that, because that is a good point, and I did not address that. And I think this is important for the commissioners' sort of thinking on this. We are showing a podium of parking underneath the office to give direct access to that building, so that would be a screened element. So you would essentially, if you think about a cake, the first level is that 20 store, or 20 stories, 20-foot-high first level that the Design Experience Guidelines call for. So that's all glass, that's restaurants, that's retail. And then above that, we would have four levels of parking that are screened off. So we have nominally 40 feet of kind of screen that could be done architecturally, and then above that, the office would start. So thank you, Director Teague, for mentioning that.
So, and Commissioners, again, have any questions, comments?
Sure.
All right.
Go back to that, the other slide. Yeah, this one. So I see that you have a solar array on the Motta Family residential, residential story, and I'm just kind of wondering, like, what kind of reliance are you planning on having on renewable energy resources versus other energy resources?
It's a great question, Commissioner. Thank you. So we haven't really gotten into that detail yet. I can talk in kind of generalities about the commitment to sustainability here. Obviously, Adina has their own policy, and our intent is to meet that or exceed it where possible. Solar is one of those things that is attractive both to residents and to city jurisdictions. So I think we would probably try and supplement some of, if not a good portion of residential energy consumption with solar. Patrick, I don't know if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak on that. Great, great question. So on the residential buildings, because it's not, I guess, in contrast to the office buildings, which are very much tenant-driven, as we'd mentioned earlier, and the design of those buildings are going to be driven by the user very much unless we go full spec. We're not showing solar yet just because we don't, we don't know what that's going to look like, and we don't want to pre-commit to something that maybe a user has a different perspective on. On the apartments, we feel strong about using solar. What we've done in the past is use solar for common areas, have enough solar on top of the roof of the apartment buildings to accommodate our, kind of our house meter, if you will, for all common areas in the building. We also do car charging stations. We'll also go through, the XL Energy has a design assistance program, and they'll put together a handful of options on how we can be better with design and meet some of the goals that Nate had just outlined. So right now, we don't have a specific, exact scope that we can commit to. I just wanted to say that it's something we're cognizant of, cognitive of, cognizant of, excuse me, and something that we're going to pay attention to moving forward and want to achieve, you know, the best that we can.
Thank you for the presentation. I want, I do have a question, but I don't, I think this might be one for the city. Do you think it's possible to add one of those pedestrian bridges over France, like the ones where like bikers and walkers can go? There's one over, right next to Southview, and I know that's pretty convenient, and there was one off of Roslyn Park on the highway there. Is that possible?
It's certainly possible somewhere along France. It's cost and getting easements and things like that. There was a bridge planned there 15, 20 years ago to the north, where we had some funding, but rather than build the bridge, they invested more on the ground, some of the improvements that are out there to intersections. Still an issue. Ideally, it would be nice to have a bridge over France.
All right, thank you.
Going down the line, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation, as usual. Great ideas. Just a couple questions, hopefully you could just dialogue through it. I know on the north side, where at Lunds is, it's a higher elevation, it's a parking lot. I'm just curious why we decided to do 11 stories on the southwest quadrant on that southwest office building, and 10 stories on the northwest building? If, if we were to do a higher elevation on the north side and a lower elevation on the south side, I'm wondering if the pedestrian plaza would have more sunlight, with its southern exposure. But I'm thinking that part of that calculation might have been the elevation on the north side. But could you just talk more about changing the elevation between those two buildings by making it higher elevation on the north and low on the south side?
Commissioner Smith, thank you. Great question. I wish I had a more robust explanation for you, but there really wasn't a whole lot of generative thought about which side of the building got more massing. I think your comments are actually really important, though, and I had not actually really thought that completely through in my head as we were designing this, that in fact, doing a higher building on the south side would lead to a little bit more shadowing. So I think that's, that's really interesting, and your point about the embankment at Lunds, I think is really well taken, too, because I think at that point, we're probably talking about four feet. So there already is a precedent set, a language of a little bit higher building, so perhaps that additional story or two would have less of a visual impact. I think as we move through this, and, you know, again, I'm thinking back to Commissioner Olson's comment about the connection from Gallagher, there's a lot of kind of competing site forces that are going to occur, and so once we get all these things to begin settling down, then I would expect that we will kind of really dig into the massing and use those site forces that you're talking about and kind of play those against visually what wants to happen. And, you know, there's an argument to be made that, I think this is what maybe you were implying, that perhaps on Gallagher on the strong corner, it might want to be taller, too. So I could, I could see it kind of both ways. We haven't looked at this in elevation yet, so I really don't have all the tools available to me to kind of understand how it feels architecturally, but it's a great question.
Oh, good, good. A couple more questions, if you mind, Jimmy.
Okay.
Okay. This one is, I think Commissioner Olson was talking about this a little bit. The pedestrian plaza is on the inside of that quadrant, right? There's a lot more square footage on the inside. It could feel like the office building and that plaza is for folks in the office, not for folks in the city. If the plaza was shifted more on France, you know, and you're driving along France, someone looks over and they say, oh, wow, everyone's gathering over there, there's probably something cool happening, I'm going to park my car, come over there and check it out. It might be a good attractor for folks just driving along France. I think you answered it before, maybe, but could you just talk about the potential of shifting the pedestrian plaza from the inside to more on the front side?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think there's kind of two components to that. The, the idea of that pedestrian plaza certainly is to create a safe and dynamic environment. And so as we look at that, the first thing that comes to mind is France is the exact opposite of that, you know, being against kind of a seven-lane, fast-moving roadway is not super conducive to making people feel safe and like sitting down and enjoying their dinners. So I think that's partially why we moved it in. The buildings are actually acting as screens to give some sort of sound protection, visual protection to individuals in there. However, I think your point is very well taken, and I think it's correct to reference Commissioner Olson's point, or the conversation we were having about drawing people through the site. the site, because that's really, I think, at the core of what you're talking about. I do agree that the combination of, we'll call it that throat of the office and then the skyway above creates kind of a gate visually and could produce the psychological and social effects you're talking about whereby people felt like they were trespassing moving beyond that. So I think it's a very important comment. I could see a scenario where the office buildings, if they were bifurcated in this way, begun to be shaped by that visual corridor. And so perhaps you get the best of both worlds where you have a visual access to that, so it feels inviting. Can also be done with public art and things to draw people through. So that's a long way of saying, I'm not really sure at this point. I like the idea of having the plaza protected, but I also like the idea of making sure people, everybody feels welcome in a public space.
Gotcha. I have a couple more, actually, too. The shape of the buildings. I know we haven't yet figured out who the tenant's going to be and we got to kind of weigh that out. Plus, you know, we're working from home a lot these days. Who knows what the future is going to hold for terms of office space. But does the design guidelines restrict us from having a curved-shaped building? Mostly buildings along France are very rectangular, straight lines, and this is potentially an opportunity to have something that's unique, something's different, where it's a curved-shaped building in some kind of way with glass that might be more artistically and architecturally interesting than the other buildings in the area. But does the design guidelines prevent us from doing something like that?
Not as far as I'm aware. It doesn't prescribe formal qualities. We talk more about visual transparency, quality of materiality. I'm smiling because that was actually one of the comments that came up at our neighborhood meeting. There was actually a comment about, because of the proximity of the promenade, and we can see it in this image, the promenade is very organic in nature, it would be very nice to, we'll call it shape the buildings. And I, I tend to agree, my own personal aesthetic would be to maybe soften these buildings. It also feels somehow more appropriate for the future that we're moving into. So I don't know that we can necessarily commit to that, but it's certainly a sensibility that we would look into. And I would imagine that were we to have a single user in here, the use of statement architecture would likely be more likely. And in that case, something bold, something curvilinear, something that felt different and bespoke would be very appropriate.
And then last question for now. So I know right south of that building, you know, there's pinstripes. I think there's a container store and then there's that massive parking ramp that's shielded. On the north side, we have the Lunds parking lot and then one to the northeast. Now, we mentioned here that we're overparked by some amount. I'm just thinking, is it possible that there could be an arrangement between the container store parking lot, the Lunds parking lot, and about overparking to reduce the height by a parking level and just leverage those other spaces to give enough parking in that general area than having to figure it all out on your own on this site?
Commissioner, if I may, just to clarify, so the suggestion is to lower the height of the buildings by using shared parking from the adjacent properties. I think we're open to having the discussion. It's going to depend on, there's some logistics behind that. We have certain tenants that require, have certain requirements in the buildings, you know, that, that might be a factor. But we're open to having discussions. My understanding right now, based on my informal discussions, and I can't say anything on behalf of those users, but the little discussion we've had is that there's some parking challenges and circulation challenges in those areas and I guess further explorations needed. Right now, the building that we have laid out is showing one floor below ground parking between the two office buildings right now. That's the way it's currently designed. We believe we have room to go down one more level, so maybe we can achieve some of the things that you just mentioned without even going down that other path. My only point is I think there's a lot of flexibility and I think it's a comment worth noting and digging into further.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Padilla?
Thank you very much. I have a few questions and comments. I'll start where Commissioner Smith left off in terms of the parking. And I, too, was wondering if the parking could be shared just amongst the buildings so that when the office buildings are empty, you know, all the guest parking can be there or vice versa, you know? It seems like there's an opportunity to combine the parking and, and make that more, more efficient and not have parking specific to each building. So that's my first comment. And we didn't talk a lot about retail. So are you anticipating retail in all the buildings? Because I know there, it's mixed use. And how much of a challenge is that? I know there are a lot of buildings all over the Twin Cities where they might be, you know, occupied office or residential and the, and the retail suffers.
Thank you, Commissioner Padilla. I maybe will take the last part of that and I'll let Patrick pick up the first part. As it relates to retail in the buildings in general, what, what we found is that when you have such a large kind of density of users, that will drive retail demand. So it is a little bit unique because I don't think on this site particularly, we're trying to draw people from kind of surrounding areas. We've kind of got our own user group here. So I would imagine that's probably where Patrick and his team are kind of thinking is that these perhaps are retail users that would cater maybe first and foremost to kind of the users here and provide a public benefit to everybody else around. So I wouldn't anticipate having the same sort of challenges with retail there. In terms of shared parking, and maybe I'll answer the first part of that and you can take this, Patrick. Commissioner Smith actually mentioned this earlier. And what we're finding oddly in the kind of post-pandemic office environment is that, that sensibility about people working nine to five and the idea that, you know, residents are coming home when office users are leaving has been turned on its head a little bit because now people are working from home three days a week and people are maybe going in the office at strange times. And all that's to say that we really need the support of experts through like a traffic study or a parking study to understand what the sharing might be. I think it's very likely that there is some, but I don't know that we have a track record right now for what those numbers are because those users have changed so much. Do you want to add to that at all?
Sure, yeah. From a high level, we know there's demand for retail on, you know, on this site, in this area. We think that restaurants, retail would be a great use on the ground floor of these office buildings or lining the plaza. At a bare minimum, our intention with our design is to have active uses on the first floor, so you're not just looking at a blank office building or, you know, screened to a parking ramp. So whatever it is, you know, if it's other type of commercial or maybe it's the active parts of an office building in the many areas, maybe it's accommodation for restaurants and retail. For us, I can tell you upfront, we want as many restaurants and retail as possible. Some of the, you know, and it's a good thing, some of the, you know, this site's a little bit different than a classic retail site. So getting restaurants and retailers in here that would be using 100% structured parking within a parking ramp, you know, it's totally possible and something we're aiming for and we think we're going to have success with. But there's going to be a little bit of education and a process for us to go through. And so I keep reiterating my, on the office buildings, depending on the users that we get, we might kind of shape that. But our bare minimum, we want active users on the first floor, that's part of our vision, and we do want restaurants and retail. So we're going to do what we can to make it happen. We think the parking and circulation can work as we've seen in some other areas in the Twin Cities with structured parking, structured parking for retail.
Okay. Just a comment to continue on, on the solar question. The architect, Mick Johnson, did in his comments say that there, he felt that there was enormous area and far greater opportunity for solar arrays. So I would agree with that and hope that you would, as your plans, you know, expand, that you would take that to heart. In terms of the tenants, exactly how do you determine that Edina needs this much or additional Class A office space? And the complement of that is, had you or do you consider any senior housing as far as the residential?
I'll, I'll start off. I do want to note that my colleague Riley Smith is here and he's really the office expert here at Enclave. My initial answer is that office is a highly dynamic market. Pick a point right now, make assumptions, 10 days later, it might be a little bit different, little bit different, little bit different. So it's highly fluid. As we all know, in general, the market's changing, but it's definitely driven by tenants. And knowing, you know, there's certain pools of tenants that we're aware of in the marketplace. I had mentioned, we've connected with several different brokerage firms, done a lot of research, worked with equity partners. We, we know generally what the pool is in the marketplace today and where the demand is, but to know, to be able to plan it out right now or even make a commitment right now is super difficult. At the end of the day, it's going to be when someone signs up. I mean, ultimately, that's how, how office works. So when we're able to secure a tenant, then we can be much more confident and a little bit clearer on what, what we're proposing. That's my initial answer. And then I apologize, there's a second part of the question that I may have not answered.
It was about...
Potentially senior housing.
Senior housing. If I may, though, I just want to tack on one more thing to help kind of elaborate on that, Commissioner Padilla. Anecdotally, in the larger trends, what we're seeing is kind of an exodus from downtown areas. So unfortunately for Minneapolis, for instance, we're seeing a large amount of tenant, and you all, I'm sure, are very aware of this, but we're seeing tenancy move from there. But one person's, I guess, Bain is another, it was Boone. And so what we've heard anecdotally from all our brokers is that places like Edina and places like West End are now starting to benefit from that. So we are seeing kind of influx of tenancy that would have been housed within downtown moving out and looking for kind of the first ring suburban experience, which is why I think we are excited about Edina and why there's a lot of potential here.
If I, if I may, I don't have a lot of different comments to make, but I got to say Nate makes everything sound better than I do in, in a good way. Let's compliment Nate. Here, it's 100% right. I just need to reiterate that that is like a common repetitive comment from every single person that we've talked to about the site, walkability, livability, living in a mixed-use development, being able to walk the grocery store promenade, Nine Mile Creek Trail system, the adjacent restaurants and retail, the potential of living in an apartment next door to where you work. All of these things are huge attractions for tenants and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the brokerage community, real estate community, and potential tenants on that specifically.
Senior housing.
Thank you, senior housing. You know what? I need to be transparent. We haven't investigated senior housing in great detail and it's not, it's not something that's in the repertoire of Enclave, but if that's feedback, we're happy to take a look at it and investigate it a little bit.
Well, I certainly think that there's a need in the city, so if there's something you could at least look into, that'd be great. As far as the height, I do have a bit of an issue with the height, the variance requested. Could you explain how you determined that this was the height that was going to work or that you'd like to pursue?
Great question, Commissioner. The height quite purely is a function of trying to get 300,000 square feet of office on the site and to get the parking ratio. So what that, as, as Patrick kind of indicated, I misspoke earlier, we have one level of underground parking. In doing that, to get to a ratio to support the office, we really do need above-ground parking. And then it's just purely a mathematical problem of, you know, we need about 14-foot clear floor-to-floor for an office and we need five stories or whatever across these two buildings. So that's how that number comes about. However, we obviously are here to take feedback and if height is an issue, I think it's something that we're willing to investigate. There's a lot of levers that we have to deal with, not, least of which is the actual overall massing of the building. There might be a solution that kind of combines all this feedback whereby we begin to redress the pedestrian connection and that allows us to connect the buildings. And by doing that, we can be more efficient on the floor plates. And by doing that, it allows us to lower the building. So all these things chained together, and if we're able to push more parking underground or potentially use other parking, like, there are levers that we can use to lower that. We're at about 150 feet. I think 70th and France is 125 or 120, 130, just, just up the block. So I'm not sure that it's lower than that. I'm, I'm being optimistic. It, it's lower than that. So we, we have an opportunity to lower it. How far we can go and what we will ask for is going to be incumbent on the further kind of design exploration.
Okay. I also do, would like to see you explore that because in terms of the shade and the amount that light casting and there are people on Lynn Mar Lane and Bristol Circle that's, you know, I, I, I think we probably have an issue and it is not compliant. So they have every reason to be concerned or to voice concern. Okay, moving on to anecdotal comments. Yesterday, I just so happened, because it was so beautiful out, to have lunch up on the second floor of Lunds, which if, if my fellow Commissioners aren't aware, you know, there's an outdoor patio on the second floor and you can sit there and you can have a glass of wine and just look at these properties. And it was really interesting to watch the traffic and all the people that were trying to cross the street in the midst on, you know, on France Avenue. And then as you Nate mentioned that, okay, well, people aren't going to be driving cars anymore. So I'm thinking, okay, we got people, bicycles, and we have to have a bus stop there now, too. So I would just, I would just encourage people, if, if you want to kind of take a bird's eye view of what goes on there and see what it's like just to have a nice meal or a glass of wine up on the patio at Lunds. And you really get a feel for what's going on in these properties and as well as across the street. I think Centennial Lakes and the promenade are the jewel of Edina. I think they are just absolutely wonderful. There's one thing that I think that is missing that if you could manage to shoehorn this into your project, which is a playground. There's no playground anywhere around there. I don't know, you know, Fred Richards Park is, is kind of far. There is one there, but I think it's the only thing that's, that's missing. And in conjunction with that comment, you have on the slide that you've left up here, you've got these individual entrances on the southern residential. And I know from, again, anecdotally, that at the Bauer, where they have very similar entrances that go right to the promenade, there are people that moved in there and moved out because there's a lot of traffic because there's question, there's concerns about privacy and security. So I don't know who you might have to talk to, you know, at the Bauer or anything like that, but I know that there's been second thoughts about those, those individual entrances and you might want to factor that in. I think I'm done. Thank you very much.
All right. After all that, I somehow still have a lot of comments. Yeah, you're going to be here all night. No. I just, yeah, I want, I want to echo some of the things already said. Thank you for the presentation. I would say since we've had the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines as well as the, the plan, I don't think we've seen something kind of conform to that so well. And almost like too well that I'm like, there's something missing. And I'll get to that. And I think others kind of touched on it. So I'm going to kind of go through a little context of the site and then design and then some opportunities. But first, the context and why, I guess just first, can you explain the size of this site? Just acreage? Do you have, do you have that measure?
I'm not sure I have the exact number. Director Teague, you have it?
Yeah, 7.9.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so it's just worth repeating. So I mean, when you, when you see this on a plan right now, it's like, okay, because it's successfully broken up, I think people, you guys certainly see the opportunity, but I think residents, fellow residents might not appreciate how huge this site is and how huge thus the opportunity is. You guys see it. But for something to really, really pivot further in that area and like Commissioner Padilla mentioned, some of the context I just wanted to note, around eight acres you have, you have the Nine Mile Creek Trail that runs along your property, the promenade. You have France Avenue. You have the northern reach of Centennial Lakes. You have a grocery store. You're now going to have a hotel likely across the street. You have pinstripes. This is such an awesome location. So I would, I would hate... So I would, I would hate in any way to squander any of, any of that potential synergy or how we could elevate that even further with this site, not just take advantage of that context, but to enhance it. So, and that's maybe kind of what I'm missing. I, I see good starts and good kernels of ideas, but I don't see anything that's really going to draw me into this site versus all those things I mentioned, relatively speaking. And maybe when the details flush out, we can see that. But that's what's so exciting about this. Some other context questions. Do you have any idea? I know you kind of have multifamily, maybe office, and things are fluid, but do you have any idea about preliminarily about phasing the site? What you would start with, where, you know, where you'd begin, where you'd finish? Any idea there?
We're not certain at this point, but I can tell you just the current working assumption is that we'd start at a bare minimum after closing with one of the apartment buildings. Maybe we do both at the same time, depending on just where financing and the market is and that type of thing. We think it's an excellent site and could handle the entire product, but there's some logic in phasing it or at least staging the construction. Maybe it's all one project, but you start one building today and you wait to start the next one six months later, so they open and, you know, they're staggered. The office, broken record, it's, you know, I don't have the details yet, and it's really going to heavily depend on users that are, that are behind it. You know, in our ideal world, we build it all at once. We would love to do that, and that's, that's, that would be our goal, but we got to follow what the market allows. And you can imagine, those are extremely substantial investments, so for us to do it on spec all at once would be very challenging, but it, I guess, to be determined on the office side of things.
You mentioned neighborhood meeting or meetings, just, you know, you mentioned there was some similar comments, but any, any key insight from that worth sharing that's kind of helped drive what we see now or is driving future considerations?
Sure. Great question, Chair Bennett. I guess I would say that as it relates to the neighborhood, we actually had two neighborhood meetings. We had a meeting with the direct neighborhood here and then actually a requested neighborhood meeting with the Cornelia neighborhood across the street. We didn't have as much participation in the Cornelia neighborhood meeting, so the feedback there is fairly limited. But in the first neighborhood meeting we had, the feedback was almost exclusively tailored to the uses. We heard a lot about, it would be great to have this kind of restaurant. It would be great to kind of have this sort of retail user. So I would classify the feedback, and correct me if I'm misstating it, but I would classify the feedback as generally supportive, curious about the users. There was, as I mentioned, one particular individual that mentioned the form of the building being a little bit more organic, and we really appreciated that comment. I think we got a couple of questions about traffic, which is, I think, a very valid question, and we just aren't, you know, in control of that at this moment, so we couldn't answer that.
Other piece of context, and it's just worth saying again, appreciate you really trying to match the, the Design Experience Guidelines even throughout the presentation of, here's what it says, this is what we're hoping it looks like. That's awesome. And then I guess, kind of to that end, what those, and this kind of goes into the opportunities we have. You mentioned, you know, there's, there's this influx of people that are kind of going to this first ring suburb, but what they want is something where you can do it all. So it's, it's not really a suburban desire. It's really like an urban type of environment. So the Design Experience Guidelines kind of helped foster that, too. So, I mean, are there just other, I mean, and that's what we see here, but are there, are there specifics you guys are excited about design-wise that you're not really sharing now, but you kind of, you're thinking about beyond the kind of some of the details that we're not seeing on the urban side of this development?
I think that's a really great question, Chair Bennett. I think things have moved so quickly in this space, in, in community planning, right? Like, we're learning so much. I think from a design team perspective, and I think Enclave would echo this, the idea of making an actual integrated community and having the opportunity to truly experience what, what Patrick was kind of describing, where people are living, where they're working, and allowing that kind of cross-migration in a way that we haven't seen yet, because those modalities just don't exist. It's always been a car-based modality of people driving from the suburbs or vice versa. We really don't have a lot of these sort of developments. You see this a lot kind of on the coasts. Seattle's a great example of it, but we don't have these examples. And so from our perspective, that's what excites us the most, how to do that and how to do it well. I really appreciated Commissioner Padilla's comment about the playground. It may seem whimsical, but if we're going to pull this off, we have to deal with the whole spectrum of users, right? We are going to have families living here who live in this building, and maybe one of the people works across the street, and they're going to experience the site in a different way than, you know, a 20-something who is living by themselves. So there's a lot of opportunities. The other piece, architecturally, I think we're really excited about, is the engagement with the outdoors. This site particularly, as Chair Bennett, you identified, has some really critical boundaries that are not quite suburban, but they're not urban either, right? It's a very unique, I don't want to say suburban, but you know, it's a, it's a comportment of that. So outdoor areas here have an opportunity to be different than anything we've seen before. Maybe West End becomes the closest, but the idea of having a balcony that overlooks green space, but also feels like it's in an urban environment, is going to, again, make us feel a whole lot more like we're on the coasts, which is something that we hear from a lot of users is probably the most attractive, so.
Great. Yeah, context and boundaries, that's kind of one, one thing that, as I look at this site and as we all do, I think the, the biggest stumbling block or just the obstacle to overcome is how Gallagher feeds in to the site and how it provides access to the site south of you. Can you just speak a little more to that? I guess one of the opportunities that seems apparent, but not totally sure, you know, there's these two crossings of that trail as well as like, that one to the east, as I look at the plan, is, what, is that necessary? I mean, would, is there an agreement in place that you have to maintain both of those access points? Or could you fill that in?
Can you clarify, are you talking about?
That, just to the west of there, the, the drive, the vehicular access?
This guy right here?
Yeah. Because, I mean, as you look at your neighbor there, you're looking at the worst part of that whole site. You're looking at the side of a garage and all these facilities, and, I mean, it, I don't understand what the function of that is compared to the one to the left. I mean, you can access it from the left, so.
I'm trying, I'm trying to posit that in my head as it exists now. So this, this access is, is that behind the ramp?
It's behind the ramp to like some, like, you know, dumpster type of, just background type of operation.
And you're saying you don't want to maintain that?
I, I, I'm just, and that's kind of like the, the opportunity and kind of goes with the trail is, you know, does Three Rivers Park have some money at hand to, not maybe, not enough to put a bridge across this, but maybe, maybe they have something that they could offer up to help.
Sure.
Foster that. And I don't know what that easement is, like what, you know, sometimes there's weird specifics and you can't change it.
That's right.
But it just seems like that doesn't need to be there, so let's just get rid of it and make it safer.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good comment because we're not connecting to anything there. Ideally, in 30 years or something, when that parking ramp goes away, because we don't need it.
Then you could open it.
Then you could open it. I, I also, I, I think it's a really good conversation. It's not one that we've really dug into in detail, and I imagine in the next step of the process, the connection with Gallagher, not just for pedestrians, but, you know, if you think about the amount of traffic that's going to come in here, is going to need some time to really be thought through, like, that, that access is already crowded.
Yeah.
So I think this team, in conjunction with the user across the street and the city, certainly, we just kind of need to think this through. That may have a bearing on your earlier comment about where that connection happens. I, I think it's a really good comment. I absolutely think that's something we're going to have to address.
Yeah, I've, I've looked at this a lot, and, I mean, you know it, too. Where Gallagher comes in kind of just interrupts some awesome stuff you could do of lining that trail with more of your plaza, you know, to have all of that south-facing sun and all, you know, you don't need it interior to the site. And I just, I don't see a way around that with maintaining four blocks here, and maybe some of that goes to Commissioner Smith's idea of, you know, getting a little more creative with the shapes of the building to change the, the network of streets and how we move vehicles and people. And I guess that just dovetails into that comment. You know, as you look at Centennial Lakes and that whole area, it's very amorphous. The, the homes to the right are kind of all like a crescent shape. And then even this site on the, I think the, the, the plan, you know, it shows four blocks, but it also shows this triangular wedge at the back of it as it faces the promenade. So could you, if not separating there, or maybe consider providing some more of a separation from the residential, but have a more robust, you know, park feature that is that triangular wedge that, you know, fits a playground? And I think that draws into the context, like, so many people and families use Centennial Lakes, and this is at the end of that lake.
Yeah.
So you're right there, and all these families will be walking by without, if they knew a playground or other things were up there, you'd just, you want to convince people to not do a loop, but keep checking out what's on your site.
We agree, and actually, I, we had intended for that little wedge to be that sort of use. So in our plan, at least in this iteration, who knows what it looks like when we're through, but we would allow that to be an extension of that promenade, because we do think that's important there. And the playground's kind of an interesting idea at that location, too. I do like all that stuff kind of connected together because I think activity breeds activity. So I, I think that wedge is kind of a TBD, like, what, what is that? Is it more of an introspective sort of piece as opposed to the more dynamic connection? I think it remains to be seen.
Well, and I think to that, I think some of the design experience, I don't know, maybe on this site particularly, like, I don't know if I'd rather have the building so close to the promenade versus maintain that whole triangle to more of, you know, that green space, more of the buffer to the residential space to just really activate that corridor, because whether it's activating along France or that plaza in between, that plaza will be dark in winter most of the year, but people will be walking the promenade year-round and, you know, maybe having something and more of the retail restaurant uses along the promenade would just be better. And wrapping around the south side, maybe at least the southeast side where you don't have the, the cars driving. But yeah, no, I, I can tell you wrestling with those things. But I think, I think this site should offer up something quite spectacular to supplement, and I'm just not seeing it. I see the live and work, and as you're mentioning, you want that integration. I don't see the play. I don't see the gather or the, the linger as much, even though that's your goal. So maybe some of it's a function of the design. I can see it in the plaza, but as someone walking the promenade or biking that trail or walking Centennial Lakes, I don't know how you naturally make your way back in there. And that seems like, Commissioner Smith said, maybe it's just, it's more centric for that integrated experience of the users of the site. But since you interface all these things, maybe putting some of that emphasis along the boundary would be better.
I, I really appreciate, I really appreciate that comment. I think there's a lot of different ways to look at that, and certainly that next layer that you're talking about, it's, it's really the pedestrian scale. I'm going back to, excuse me, Commissioner Smith's comment, I think some of that can be done with architecture, too, right? Like, if we're talking about how do you draw people in, architecture plays a role in that, whether that's the softening of edges or allowing the building to kind of step back so we don't have a rough edge. I mean, I think Chair Bennett, maybe what you're talking about, too, is just those entry points to the site, like, how do you make those feel more inviting? And then where are the moments, the nodes? You know, the Kevin Lynch idea of the nodes and paths, like, where are our nodes to stop along there? So this, while it looks nice, is, is very much a diagram, and I think that's how you're reading it, and I think that's appropriate. I think the next iteration of this with the great feedback we're receiving really starts elaborating on that, looking at the architecture and figuring out the interplay, and then starting to look at this stuff in three dimensions, because maybe it's not a flat plaza. I mean, we have a flat plate, but a flat plaza really can be a windswept, so there's got to be locations where the plaza steps up. There has to be terracing, like, all those things that will come in the next iteration. But the feedback is, is heard and very well appreciated.
Yeah, and I guess just to tie into, to previous discussions, and, you know, we're taking cues from successful projects like the Bauer we mentioned, but the difference there was that was just a residential project. So as I see that eastern boundary, I, I do feel like there's a huge opportunity, and if it goes this way, it, it's not engaging enough. So I would encourage taking that whole eastern boundary as the opportunity to engage. And then other opportunities. Speaking on the renewable front, I think as you, as you get more amorphous with the shapes and the creativity you're talking about, I mean, even just when you come in for maybe a formal application, speak toward the design that is maybe more sustainable of how things are oriented, because it's really how you lay things out, as you know, versus putting solar panels as a Band-Aid afterwards. So, you know, usually following the lay of the land and using what you got would help. But yeah, that's all I got right now, and this is very exciting and can see the passion and the commitment you guys have. So I think the city is, and residents are equally excited, and, you know, this is one of those where we've heard about it, you know, for the last little bit, and it's nice to not be surprised, caught off guard, caught off guard, so I appreciate all the proactive outreach you've done so far and encourage a lot more. Commissioner Padilla?
Yeah, if I could just make one more comment, and this is probably for Director Teague. When a traffic study does get done, and this is a thought that came to me off of Commissioner Bennett's comment about where Gallagher flows through, and everybody seems to, with good reason, be, be concerned about that. But I hope that the traffic study is more than a vehicle study, because there is a steady flow of people that come from, there's so many apartments, you know, on Park Lawn and, and on Gallagher, that there is just a steady stream of people that are coming right into the area where you're talking about. So I think it's a, it's a great comment that you made, but I hope that the traffic study addresses that, so that we, we know what we're dealing with in terms of people trying to access this area, and we, we get good information, not just vehicle information.
Any other questions, comments, answers? All right, well, thank you so much for your time. Thank you for purchasing the bunker hill, sledding hill, or whatever it could be. And we look forward to the changes that are coming there.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate your feedback and look forward to presenting it again.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
You, too. Thank you.
All right, so that, that concludes our reports and recommendations for this evening. Next, we'll have Chair and member comments. Open the floor to any fellow commissioners, if they have anything they'd like to share. Commissioner Smith?
I can ask my quick question if you want. Is that okay? Also a question for Director Teague. When we had the working session the other night with the City Council, I think it was Councilman Rissar, is that how you say it? That mentioned that years ago, there was training for the members of the Planning Commission, and I'm wondering whether or not that's, still exists, whether or not that's an opportunity.
It does, and we do them periodically. It's been a, maybe it's been a couple of years since we had one.
Well, I think, and what she mentioned seemed a bit more robust than the ones we've had, which was kind of like a, a few-hour-long workshop. She was talking about like a three-day something, something pretty intense.
Three days is, is what I recall, but anything, I mean, you've got six new people on this, you know, on the commission in the last two years, so.
Yeah, so we want to do some in-house training with either our city attorney, or we brought in a consultant to help with that a couple of years ago, so we want to do that at minimum. But when we see seminars that pop up, we'll, we'll send out an invitation for commissioners to attend. I, you know, there's, there's been several day-long seminars that commissioners have gone to in recent years. I haven't seen any three-day events, but we'll keep an eye out for it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy. Great question on the training. I am big-time supporter of training and... Great question on the training, and I am a big-time supporter of training and, you know, making us more equipped to analyze these requests that come. My comments are just three of them. So, you know, the city is certainly, you know, developers work with different neighborhoods to get feedback. And my take on this one is, if we could have, you know, strong neighborhood associations, not all neighborhoods in Edina has an association. I live in Strackaw Park, and we have an association there, so we try to get as engaged as possible with the city and activities in the city. I know there's other associations, just a few of them across Edina. So one thing that I'm thinking about, you know, working with the city on, partnering with MJ and others, is to just get more neighborhoods excited about associations, and seeing how we could leverage them to not only build stronger communities, but also be in contact with the city for any kind of development that occurs, help our neighbors be more informed of what's happening in the city with development. And so that's one of the exciting things that I think we continue to work on and partner with as we make Edina more engaging and more connected. The other one was just a random idea, you know, on, I forget which time of year, but I think in Minneapolis, they shut down, I think, Lindell Avenue for a day, and you get to ride your bike, walk the entire avenue. I think in Edina, we do that to some degree, maybe today when we have the Art Project, the Arts Day. But it'd be just amazing to really promote other forms of transport besides driving, biking, walking, walking with your stroller, scootering, all these different things. If we could shut down maybe a length of France Avenue for sometime during the year, where we encourage folks to really take advantage of our parks, our rest areas, use other forms of transport besides driving, just to see what that feels like. I know we try to reduce parking, we try to get folks to start using public transportation more, but that might be one step in that direction, just to get folks out, get them to connect it, and get them to use their feet more. So I think, I don't know how that's going to fit in, but that's one idea that I would love for us to plan and maybe shoot for in the next couple cycles. The last one, you know, spring is here, I'm sure a lot of families are getting to plant their favorite vegetables and everything, and I want to encourage pollinator gardens, you know, plant flowers, bees, you know, natural pollinators, butterflies. I can't recall the last time I saw a butterfly. It's, it's rare sometimes, you know? And so the more we could do to help increase the plant diversity, you know, yes, you could have a lawn, everybody likes to have a lawn and to mow it every time, it looks nice, but cover part of it and put some flowers there, you know, that might be something nice to do. And so I'm, I'm just encouraging other families like myself to go this year and see if we could get a pollinator garden going. So that's my comments, Jimmy.
Thank you much. Any other comments? I got just one, follow-up. We had a work session last week with the City Council to kind of follow up on over a year-long of effort of trying to figure out how to make the development review process simpler, easier, more efficient. The Planning Commission proposed some recommendations unanimously to the City Council, which seemed to have some, be intercepted with some friction. And talking to different council members after and during, it seems like there isn't any more room on work sessions to keep this conversation going. So one idea that comes to mind, and is actually suggested by someone in that group, is, and maybe before I say this, I know the mayor left off, left on the note of having staff provide some sort of feedback of our recommendations or findings on it. I don't know if you remember, there was at least some recommendation to do a little bit more work before they consider anything. Do you recall that, Carrie, or what the nature of that was exactly?
Yeah, I do. We haven't had a chance as staff to sit down and debrief, you know, the city manager has been out, so we still intend to do that, have a staff debrief, but, you know, my perspective, I supported the, your recommendation.
And so I, and I think that's where we felt from all of staff is supporting and helping the Planning Commission get to that point. So I guess one suggestion is, even if we feel like City Council's going to reject it, maybe it's still worth putting it forward to be on for a public hearing, and then that way we could actually get public feedback at the same point. Because some of this is like, if we take a step back, maybe it's more incumbent upon us to, to get more feedback and more support for that change. But if that, if, if we're not going to do this for another year, that's just too long for me to wait. So I would recommend us pushing for that recommendation to a public hearing, so then it's on the City Council's agenda. They have to vote, we know where they stand, we know exactly, the community knows where they stand, and then also the, the community has an opportunity to come testify, get more feedback, so in case it isn't supported, we would at least have more base to do something with that. Yes, Commissioner Olson.
And along those lines, you guys probably all saw the newspaper article, and I, and I felt that maybe it was misinterpreted what the goal of going down to one public hearing, there was a comment, I think, about how it's not as equitable because you're relying too much on people having computers, and that was absolutely not the case of what we wanted. And it, it's an opportunity for us to communicate better, that the public hearing does cater to people who work nine to five, don't necessarily have kids, who have time to sit through a two-hour meeting on summer evening. And so part of the effort is to have more diverse ways to gather input and making sure that that's understood, so that the perception is not incorrect from what our goal was.
Thank you, that's an important piece to it. And I guess similar to how the parking ordinance went, you know, we did present that in a public hearing that did get denied, or, you know, to revisit it by the City Council. So I don't think there's harm in doing that to get the conversation out there and, you know, allow people to engage better.
Yeah, let me.
And I don't see what would stop us. I mean, that was the whole point of us doing this work, not to just have a work session and now put a pin in it.
Yeah, let me get back to you on that, how that, how that might play out. Another thing we talked about, too, is some of those things where we did have some common ground on, you know, improving the website, some of those things I think we can put into practice, so we'll look at.
Yeah, I just don't want to grab the low-hanging fruit and leave the stuff that's very important just to be decided never. And I think the community deserves to have a voice in that conversation, because right now they don't still. You know, there's no official way to provide input, and if you read the article, you'd have, it's, it was a complete mischaracterization of our conversation, our recommendations, like we talked about in that meeting, but a lot of residents aren't paying attention to work sessions. So I would recommend us just moving that forward to, you know, a public hearing. And I don't know, I, I don't think we need to like straw-pull or vote here, but if you think we ought to, maybe we.
It would be a zoning ordinance amendment, because it's, it's all in the zoning chapter, Chapter 36, which is your purview, so, yeah, we would have to draft that up, you know, and present it as a formal ordinance amendment.
Yeah, and obviously, we're, we're all prepared to discuss it, and, you know, we actually had quite a, I think that's the most amount of Commissioners I've seen at a work session with the City Council. That was awesome. So is that something that can just be done? I mean, that was, that's kind of the intent with most of the work we, we do, like the parking ordinance. I don't know what the process was. I know we got, we got it ready to go, and then it got put on a public hearing. This was a little more proactive, that kind of is telling us not to, but I think we need to.
The charge was to draft an ordinance. This wasn't a charge to draft an ordinance to propose, it was to, you know, report and recommend. So let me get back to the Commission on what that next step might look like.
But I guess to, to your point, if the process is bound by the zoning ordinance, then, I mean, that should be a natural outcome of providing a recommendation to revise it, so.
Yeah, if, had we, yeah, so let's assume we had clear direction, that next step would be to draft an ordinance, and that's when those public hearings occur.
Yeah, I think.
That would have, that, that's the final step, and once we come to an agreement on it.
So at least, I, I, again, we, here was our recommendation, I don't know if we need to, to say something further tonight to encourage staff to do that, but that would be my recommendation, and.
Yeah, I'm going to need to do some research on it and get back to you.
Okay, so we'll table this till the next time, but any other comments on, yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, you know, and I think Director Teague did touch on it a little bit. In addition to what you're mentioning, Jimmy, I think one good idea would be just some public education on what the current process is. I think that would help a lot. I think what could be happening with, if there's any frustration on our review processes, just knowing what the process is. If we were to, you know, lay it out exactly how we did it, here's what it currently is, here's the steps, here's the, the two public hearing meetings, here's when the City Council decides. I think if we just have that really well-laid out, communicated to the city, there's a lot of great avenues that we could do it, that would really be helpful for residents, so that they, they know what to expect next, and, and how their feedback in multiple different ways that we do receive it is, is, is submitted. I really appreciate the city, there's like the Mayor's Minute, there's the updated Edina, I get all those on my YouTube, and I love it. And something along that, with the website, et cetera, would be just a great vehicle for residents to observe, watch, and say, oh, here's how you guys do it, okay, that makes sense to me. And then, to your point, Jimmy, going on that path now of getting more feedback of how could we make it better, would be a natural next step there. So just the communication, I think, on what is the current process today would be really helpful.
Good, and just to react to that, 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 that's a great, important takeaway from that meeting, as well as, you know, there's these other opportunities for, you know, people to engage and have an impact on decision. And I think what clouded some of the conversation was we were talking about different things, and we were allowing different things to be a justification to not address or give a certain thing a chance. And I think if we educate people better, they would understand where we're coming from and support it, and this ties into what Carrie's going to share about the Cahill District. It's like, those meetings, those conversations about small area plans are so much more important, and that ties into your Neighborhood Association comment. When Sheila Barubi and I helped lead the 44th and France Small Area Plan, the Morningside Neighborhood Association's very active, probably the most active one in Edina at the time, and probably still is, but that helped that process be so engaged with the community, that those people had such buy-in to this overall plan, that, yes, there was some friction with developments to come after, but people understood that that was their best opportunity to make an impact. And I don't think residents understand that now, and our process again encourages a resident, their only opportunity to talk to the City Council formally is at the very, very, very end of a single development, you know? And how do we educate people around being more proactive? And how do we create a process that encourages it and kind of forces that to happen is, you know, my interest, too, so I like that. All right, sorry, just, whoop, turn it over to you, Carrie?
Uh, yeah, just a few updates from the last City Council meeting. The Council considered the 4404 rezoning and subdivision, you recall that one? The Planning Commission recommendation on the rezoning was to deny, and the, the City Council did that very same thing, they, they denied the rezoning. They did approve the subdivision, so the property owners are now going through the building permit process. The other one was, and I think we talked about this last time, but they made the final decision on the US Internet site, where they put the all-brick on the, on the sides facing the public, and they approved that one. You will have another sketch plan at your next meeting on the Eden 100 site, so be ready for that one, it's all residential project. Let's see.
Is that the building in Plac Stos?
Yes, yeah, just across on Vernon here. Let's see, oh, in regard to the 4404, it was suggested, you know, we've got that little, the discrepancy in the city code about multifamily residential is a conditionally permitted use in the planned commercial district, and then we also don't allow residential on the first floor. So I'll be bringing forward, they had recommended that we do an ordinance amendment to, to take care of that. So in the next month or two, we'll set a public hearing and, and talk about that language. That's it for me.
Anything, I happen to get with the, 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 keys, automotive site, that?
Yeah, there's a "for sale" sign that's gone up on the property, and we are fielding a lot of calls on a lot of different ideas, none of them I don't think are going to move forward from what I'm gathering, but it's yielding a lot of phone calls.
Yeah, the sign has "varied prominently for automotive use" on it, too, and just, it's just a reminder, we, you know, part of our work plan that kind of got tabled, or work items that got tabled was to address kind of these corridors and areas of change, not, not just the small areas, but, you know, finding these anomalies in the code, like that site.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the next 10-year comprehensive plan is going to be here before we know it, so I think next year, we got to do that, because that's going to set the stage for the, for that plan that we have to start thinking about in 2026, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the residents still sitting here, tuning in in person, appreciate it. That concludes our meeting, and I welcome some.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So moved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Get the gun. Oh, yeah, oh.
Uh. No.